The plan this evening is that we're gonna kinda rotate through some questions, but we're gonna start out letting each candidate talk for just a couple of minutes. Giving you their, I call it the stump speech. Now, after that, I have some questions. I had eighteen questions submitted to me before tonight. The ones I've seen so far have pretty much matched up with what we've got going already. I have mostly duplicates. But the first question will start with Mr. Rowland on this end, and everyone will answer it. Second question will start with Mr. Valdez, and everyone will answer it. Third question, and we'll just keep doing it that way. The plan is to be done at about eight fifteen, and then each candidate will get to kinda do a closing statement. And at eight thirty, if there's a cookie left over, we'll go back and have a cookie and give you guys a chance to talk to the candidates on your own afterwards. We have a new candidate in Commissioner District Three. I'd like to introduce Sue Littlefield. John Shipper, Commissioner District Three. Commissioner District One, Mr. Del Schwab. Commissioner District One, Mr. Steve Valdez. Commissioner District One, Mr. Robert Rowland.
Boy, what a great turnout. Looks like a lot of the nights we had a caucus where you looked out and saw a great turnout. And I think that is kind of what our theme is this year. There's a lot of great new people involved this year. We know that this is an important year for not just us locally, but at the state level and in our nation in general. My name is Robert Rowland. I am running for County Commissioner in Elbert County District One. I am a Republican Tea Party candidate, as most of you already know, also being the chairman of the Elbert County Tea Party for the last few years. I believe in a few very, very basic principles. I believe number one and foremost in transparency. I believe that it is the will of the people and the right of the people to be involved in our government at every level that they wish to be involved in. I think that accountability goes right along with transparency, in that once we elect our accounted officials, our elected officials, we have to be accountable to the people. That comes through being transparent, but it comes through providing information truthfully, honestly, openly, even when it hurts. And sometimes it does, sometimes it will. I also believe in fiscal responsibility. It is the foundation of all that we do as elected officials. Because everything that we do or can do or can't do depends on our ability to manage the resources we have. And that is our tax dollars. And the money and the resources are given to the county or the government by the people. They expect that that be done with the fiduciary responsibility, the openness and the transparency that they deserve. I have a history. I have a record of being transparent, fighting for transparency through my efforts in the Tea Party and elsewhere. And I will bring that same level of transparency to the office of County Commissioner that I've demonstrated and fought for for the last few years and ask that everybody in this room and everybody in this county come to the table and join us in the roundtable discussion to help us solve some of the challenges that we have. And we have some challenges, not just fiscal, but we have challenges of oil and gas and water. Our water is so important that we have to solve those problems in a way that benefits but follows first and foremost the mandate of the people in this room and in this county. I'll do that as County Commissioner and I look forward to talking to you and answering your questions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Valdez, and I'm a candidate for District One, County Commissioner. For those of you I haven't met or spoken with, I'd like to give you a little bit about my background. I'm a Colorado native. I'm a Colorado native from Durango, a twelve-year Elbert County resident, and an Army veteran. I got involved with Elbert County issues about six years ago when I started working on the master transportation plan. Since then, I've been working on different road projects in the county, and roads are very important to me, so I've spent a lot of time doing that. I've also currently serving on the Board of Building Authority as well as the Board of Adjustments in Elbert County. And I've also been very active with charitable events throughout Elbert County, like the Toys for Tots events here. As for my professional background, I'm a thirty-two-year telecom professional where I've managed and created multimillion-dollar budgets. I've also been a small business owner, so I have a solid background in business management. And that's what I would bring to this position as a County Commissioner. Thank you for coming tonight, and I look forward to earning your vote. My name's Steve Valdez, and I'm running for County Commissioner, District One.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate you being here. I know how cold it is out there. My name is Del Schwab, and I am the incumbent County Commissioner for District One, and I am running for reelection. You know, I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you a whole bunch of promises. I watched Obama's speech the other night, and that secured my presentation. But I will tell you this, what I've done. I encourage each of you to go to my website or pick up a folder that's out there, and there's a document that I titled "The Last Four Years in the Commissioner's Office." It's been an interesting one. You know, four years ago, when I stood in this very same building, I had no idea that I would have to make some of the decisions that we've had to make or be faced with some of the challenges that we had. However, I elected to run, and I have done my best to run as a good County Commissioner to represent the entire county. You're gonna hear a lot of stuff tonight, but I really challenge you as delegates and alternates to prepare yourself for the facts. I do not campaign negatively. I will not do that. However, a lot of it's been thrown at me. I do not retaliate that way. I do stand on my record, a proven record, and I encourage everybody. I have got a sheet here that's called "The Fact Sheet of the Board of County Commissioners." After this evening's presentation, I would like each of you to come up and get a copy of this. If I run out of them, I'll make sure that you get one. Give you a list of quick personal background. I'm a retired firefighter, thirty-one years with the Aurora Fire Department. My wife and I owned a local auction company out here, Schwab Auctions, for about twenty years. I've sold that business and moved on with my Commissioner career. I am a candidate here speaking to the Republican Party. I have not had to go to an outside group to get support. I have only come to my Republican Party for support. You are the delegates, you are the alternates, and you have the vote to see who's gonna be in that seat for the next four years. I can tell you this, four years from now, I'm gonna be in that seat, because I will have my term limit, and I will be done with that part of my public office, but I will continue to serve this county as I have for the last thirty years in different fashions. I was a 4H leader, as well as, like I said, the auction company, the local auction company out here. I have a proven track record that deals with local government. I will have four years with the County Commissioner's Office. I have thirty-one with the city government. So I have a proven track record in both arenas. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just telling you that I am a qualified candidate for this position. I am not done. I have got four more years to correct some things that we really have worked very hard at, whether it be financially or for the preservation of this county. Like I said, I'm gonna be around a while. I appreciate you being here. Thank you, and I appreciate your vote for County Commissioner. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Shipper, and I'm a candidate for District Three, County Commissioner. I've had the privilege of serving for the past three years, and I appreciate it very much. The one thing Del did not mention is that when we walked into office the very first day, we realized that we were in a bad situation. We were handed a file with a letter in it that said that we owed an additional two million dollars plus. That note became due September fifteenth of that year, two thousand and nine. We had to consolidate the two notes that we inherited, the first one for the Justice Center, the second one for additional expenditures. We did that, and we did it in a businesslike fashion. Those two notes to date are on the Justice Center, the Justice Center only, and the water rise to six pieces of property in the county. There's been some bad information put out about our debt. That is the only debt the county has. We had a real, real tough decisions to make, because the expenditures, when we took office, were far exceeding our income. And we took the bull with the horns. We had to reduce expenditures the first two years by thirty-three percent. We had to reduce employees by twenty-five percent, and we made those hard decisions, and we did it. Today, you have a balanced budget. You've had one for the past three years, and I will stand on that. We have made the budgets. We have made the audit reports available to anybody that would ask for them. They were available online. They are available in hard copy. All you have to do is come to the County Commissioner's Office and pick up that information. A couple of things that we've done that have been very positive. We consolidated the Kyle and Simla Road and Bridge Department into one department so we can better serve the needs of the county. We have had fewer road complaints in the past three years. They've been cut in half. We consolidated our building and our planning department into one department under the direction of one director. That has worked extremely well, and we have gotten a lot of cooperation from our employees. What we intend to do is to try to provide the best service we possibly can to the citizens of Elbert County. We have a good, solid foundation right now. I am running for office because I have been asked by friends and acquaintances and supporters to do so. I feel that for more years, we put the county on a good, solid financial footing, and it will be for the best of the people that we serve here in Elbert County. Thank you all very much.
I'm gonna try not to run away. Hi? I'm scared. Sue Littlefield. This is horrifying for me, so bear with me. I wanna thank Scott for giving me the opportunity to stand up here. I just declared on Friday, so this is all lightning fast, and I feel as though I'm caught up in a bit of a tornado. But a little bit about me, I've been in the county for eighteen years. I have no family here apart from my husband. I spent quite a few years in aerospace where I have an engineering background, and while doing that, I decided to get a degree in business, and my degree's in flight management. I feel that I have quite a lot of skills to bring to the table. I manage a small business. I own a small business. I know how hard it is to stay afloat. I know how hard it is to manage money. I know how hard it is to make decisions about asset purchase and management, and I just stayin' afloat in a tough economy's a tough time, and I know that Elbert County is faced with a lot of very challenging questions, and a lot of the answers are not gonna come easy. I don't have a lot of answers for the county, so I won't be prepared to offer a lot of answers when the question and answer period comes around. I'm here to tell you that I want to serve my county. I feel that it's my civic duty. I feel that it's my duty as a Christian to get involved where I can. I don't like where our federal government is headed, but I can't fix the federal government. I can only come in and do what I can do as a person on a local level, and I'd like to do my part, and I'd like to take my chance at doing some of the things I think I can do for the county. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Peterson reminded me that I was supposed to pass this around. If you don't have your email address or your telephone number, and you'd like to be on the Republican email list, put that on here. Also, there's a box there on the end if you would like to have your name on the Conservative Breakfast email list. So just run it down the rows, and we'll get going. Mr. Valdez, what are your top three priorities for improving Elbert County?
Top three priorities, transparency. My top one is transparency and accountability to the citizens of Elbert County. When you have accountability with the government, you have trust in your government, and it is the foundation for what moves forward in the county. Second thing would be financial responsibility as well. I'd like to take a look and work on the financial end of the county to understand it, to see where we can improve it, if it can be improved. Third is I would like to fix roads. That's what got me started as a County Commissioner. The roads was the first issue that came up, and it's been a very strong topic now that I've worked for the last, like I said, six years. So those would be my top three.
And I assume I'm next, sir?
Any questions?
Very good. The financial responsibility is my number one project for the county. You know, Commissioner Shipper talked earlier about having a balanced budget for three years. We're proud of that. We've worked very hard to do that. We're gonna continue doing that. I think the accountability of all of our employees, our department heads, our other elected officials are prime importance in running a county. You know, the second area that I want to talk a little bit about was certainly the responsibility that we've had as commissioners to figure out how we're gonna cut savings and make half savings. We have combined departments. We are continuing to look at that. You know, labor is our number one expense in this county. When we took office, was there some heavy sites? Yes, there was. We have eliminated a lot of those. But I think the third thing that I really wanna look at is taking technology and moving that forward in the county to solve some of our problems. A good example is just recently, we continued to pursue with the Treasurer to accept credit cards for payment. He does that now. We are now encouraging our clerk and recorder to accept credit cards for doing payment in her office. One of the things that we have is we're running short. More people are doing more today with less than ever before. So we have to use technology to throw that, to get our mission accomplished that we need for the county and not cut services. Thank you.
The question was one of the top three priorities. I have four. Balanced budget, service to the citizens of Elbert County, roads, and economic development. Thanks.
As a citizen of the county and having been on the outside looking in for as long as anybody else, maybe not so much, but I think transparency is important. I find it frustrating that it seems hard to access information or get information. I think that process could be improved. I'm sure there are many other processes that could be improved. That's a guess. I'm not in there right now, so I can't say for sure. Another thing that concerns me is roads. Roads are a mess. I don't know how to fix that, but I think that boils down to a budget issue. But I don't think it's so much a budget issue as a cash flow problem, and I would like a chance to get in there and address that. Thank you.
You know, the priorities of a county like ours changes from time to time, and you have to be responsive when that happens. I've said before, and I think a lot of the folks up here this evening are talking about transparency and accountability, and clearly those are the platforms of what I'm running on. But those are tools that are applied to the things that we need to get done. Number one, we've gotta get our county finances in order. We talk about a balanced budget, and you know, a balanced budget is an accounting term that says when your assets match your expenses. Well, assets are like your home. You own a three-thousand-dollar home, you got a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in equity in it, but when you go to the grocery store, you don't use that equity to buy your groceries. We have a cash flow problem in Elbert County. We've had a cash flow problem in Elbert County for a long time. And because we end up the year with not enough cash to carry us through the first part of the next year, we've got to attack the fiscal year issue and cash flow issue that has been plaguing our county for so long that ultimately ends up resulting in our having the kinds of financial problems we have. So number one, we need to attack the budget issues, the cash flow, and the budget issues. We also have a couple other issues on the table right now that are really important. Oil and gas is coming to Colorado, or coming to Elbert County. And it's coming here, and it's going to have to be managed by this county and the citizens and the people that you elect to do it. These are huge issues, huge challenges. So those issues of oil and gas and water, and I think all three of those are tied together for responsible management and decisions, is probably number two. We've got the roads, and we've got a compactor issue right now facing us with some potential issues about environmental problems and potential legal liabilities. So right now, today, if I were Commissioner, we'd be attacking them in that order. A year from now, or ten months from now, when the new Commissioners and myself take office, the priorities may be different. But all in all, we have to address the issue of the day. Right now, the issue is getting this county fiscally sound, on track, and in a cash flow situation that allows us to move forward and provide the services that you all mandate that we do. Thank you.
Mr. Schwab, what changes would you make to reduce spending in the county and prepare a balanced budget that all voters can understand?
You know, the changes, and I don't know that they're changes. I think I would continue with the programs that we're using right now to reduce spending. You know, the number one thing that I really feel very strongly about is accountability. I hold our department heads, our other elected officials accountable for their budget, and we need to continue the, we have weekly meetings, updates on where we are in the budget, but we certainly have quarterly reviews. And we require that all of our elected officials and department heads attend those. And if they are over budget, because we have a way to measure that, then we're gonna be asking them why. You know, the second thing we looked at, when I first took office, we talked about, "We're freezing spending. We're freezing spending." Why? I heard that, but nobody paid any attention to it. This last year, we got the attention of our staff. We do not condone unnecessary spending. Number one, that's a total waste of money if you decide that the budget, you've got money left in your budgets, you're gonna spend it at the end of the year. We've stopped that. That does not apply at all to the budget process. But I think that the number one thing that I would continue, and we just started that this last year, is having our budget hearings. Those are open to the public. They're more than welcome to come. In fact, our first two or three we had, we had public attending those budgets. Those are very important so that the citizens can understand what our budget process is all about. The second part of the question is, what would I do to enable the citizens to understand our budget? We've done a couple of things. Just recently, I found out, I was presented with a spreadsheet, there was no department head on there at all. It was all numbers. Well, Fund Twenty, Fund Ten, and to the average person, funds means nothing. So I said, remove that. You can use that internally if you want, but put, whether it's General Fund, Road and Bridge, and so forth. And I think that will help the citizen to understand the budget. Combined with, we now have two budget officers in the county. I would like to see some open forum for the people to come in who don't understand the budget, to ask questions. Budget 101, if you will. But I would continue a lot of the programs that we're doing now. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Elbert County's been through some tough times in the past three years. We had a shortfall last year of about five percent in a very, very conservative budget. And I'd like to outline for you basically what makes up our budget. One is property tax, clerk and recorder's fees, Treasurer's fees, model traffic code, revenue from the building and planning department. Those are the major sources of revenue for our General Fund in the county. That was down about five percent last year. Not pointing a finger at anybody, that's a fact. Based on the reduction in property values in the county, assessed valuations will be down for two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. That's a fact. Property values in the Simla area across the board were down fifty percent. The bubble has burst, real estate-wise, and we're all suffering revenue-wise for the county. We have had to make some very, very tough decisions. First of all, we have made budget hearings open to the public. We have made copies of our budget available to the public. We've made copies of the audit report available to the public. We have put all those documents online for people to access. If people are not hooked online, we will be happy to provide anybody with a copy of that budget. I don't know what more we can do to be more transparent and to bring things in line. We do have a balanced budget. The budget is solid. Will we have to make additional cuts this year? We're going to be looking at it on a quarterly basis, and if we have to do it, we will do it, because we are going to end up this year with a balanced budget. I would be happy to answer any questions concerning the budget after we adjourn today.
If this is truly about money, I think the best thing we can do is go in there and constantly evaluate how it's being spent, where it goes, what we can cut, what we can live without, and what we can't live without. There are gonna be hard choices. I can't tell you that I know what those choices are. I'm not in there. I would like to have an opportunity to get in there and look at it. I know that we've cut services, and as a citizen in this county, I find that frustrating. I'm not saying that I don't understand the purpose for it. I do. Everybody has to save money. We're all trying to cut costs every place we can. We have to cut costs to try to buy food. Those are the tough decisions that the county's in as well. They're having to figure out how to buy pencils and how to fuel their vehicles. I don't know what the answers are, so I don't wanna stand up here and waste anybody's time, but I do understand their problems. I don't know what all the solutions are, but I would consider citizen input to be a big issue. This is your county, and it's time you had a chance to express your interest in it and your support of it, and have your ideas brought forth in a convenient fashion to where you can tell us what you can live with and what you can't. Thank you.
You know, these are tough economic times. We all know that. And it's true that our property tax values are going down, and our property values are going down, and those will result in tighter times and less revenue and less dollars. But you know, running a budget, whether it be for private industry like where I come from, I handled the budget at the Rocky Mountain News, Denver Post for almost twenty-nine years that I was there, helping build the printing plant, coming in under budget, a hundred-and-sixty-five-million-dollar project. But not going over my resume, these are issues that have to be dealt with in a businesslike fashion. And government, just like business, has to live within its means. Period, end of statement. We have to know what our revenues are. We have to project those realistically, live within the means that we have, and design and hold accountable all of our elected officials and our department heads and our employees to live within those budgets. Talk about how would we do that in real life. As a Commissioner, I think that what you do is you sit down with the qualified people you have. We've got some really great department heads and leaders in this county. We've got Sheriff Shane Heep, very, very capable, intelligent man who knows how to do budgets, and Ed Eman who runs the Road and Bridge Department. You get those people, and you utilize their skills and their talents, and you get a budget that is realistic and you live within it, but at the same time, as a Commissioner, you have to hold everybody accountable to live within that budget. On July first, if you're more than fifty percent off on your expenses, then it's time to sit down and come with a plan that's gonna get you back on track and bring you in on budget by the end of the year. It's a matter like you all live every day in your lives with budgets. How much money you have in your checkbook, how much goes to your house payment, how much goes to a car payment, has to be done in a business environment and government as well. Now, government can be complicated. It can be bureaucratic. There's restrictions about moving money from one fund to another without doing appropriations and all those kinds of things. But in the end, it really is a businesslike approach that's gonna get us back to running the county in a fiscal manner like it should be run. Now, and Scott, what was the second half of the question?
What changes would you make to reduce spending in the county and prepare a balanced budget that all voters can understand?
You know, until you get in office, it's very difficult to get some of the information and find out exactly where you stand, and the budgets are complicated. And it is incumbent upon all of us to get involved at a level that we can get involved in in our regular lives to find out how the budget's being run. And it is true, through open records requests, but we shouldn't have to go through open records requests. We oughta be posting this information to the county, to the people. We oughta be putting it out to them, being as open and visible as we can. One thing that I've done is, before the end of the night, I've come up with a position paper on every single position and issue that I know of today on the table in this county. Here's one on what is a balanced budget, and I'd encourage you to pick up one when you're done, or go to my website. I've listed my position, my evaluation, and my opinion on every issue in the county from compactor to budget to oil and gas and water, all on these kinds of sheets, because I think you have a right to know what each of us thinks. And so I think that's the kind of transparency and the communication level that needs to come from your elected officials to you so that you do understand what we are. There's tough cuts coming. If we have to cut ten percent across the board, twelve percent, you know, we're gonna have to get back within a cash flow lifestyle in Elbert County and get us back to the reserve to get through that first period every year that we need to be at. It's gonna take some tough decisions, and we're gonna have to do it, and the people you're gonna elect, including myself, are gonna have to make those decisions. But they're gonna make them with your help, knowing what your priorities and your mandates are. That's how we get it done. Thank you.
My approach to the budget would be to evaluate, go to all the department heads, talk to the people that are involved on a day-to-day basis with these departments, and work with them to evaluate their needs and what it takes to run their department. I do this now with the business I'm in now, with evaluating projects and budgets to find the best value for what we are spending our money on. Having the budget that can be explained easily, or you can read and understand, would be another goal that I would do. another goal that I would do, to simplify it to a point where you can understand it and look at it, line for line, and understand what each line means and where that expenditure is going to. My idea with this is to work with the people that are in place. They're there, they're good people. Elbert County has some very good people that are running our departments, and those are the people that we would need, I would work with to figure and to get the budget under control and understand its expenditures. Thank you.
Mr. Schipper. Water has been and will continue to be a major issue in our county. In your opinion, what regulatory authority does the Board of County Commissioners have when it comes to the use of water, i.e. property, by individuals or water districts in Elbert County?
It's a long question. First part of the question deals with individual wells. Well, the state controls whether you can drill a well or not. You go to the state to get a permit to put a well on your property. In regard to water districts, that has been an issue of concern and has been debated time and time again, and it is a matter of contention here in Elbert County. I firmly believe that the Board of County Commissioners needs to take a very close look at every present water district and every future water district that is being proposed to them. Because once that water district is established, the Board of Directors of that water district has almost unlimited authority to make decisions affecting that particular water district and what they are granted. Thank you.
I'm not well-versed on the issue of water districts, but I can tell you, I have a well. I live out in eastern Colorado, and we have bigger water problems than a lot of people in the Parker areas or Elizabeth, because we're out on the coal beds. And let me tell you, in a dry year, you don't even want to drink this stuff. It's that bad. So, one of my big concerns is that whatever's done with water, I want to protect water rights, I want people to take responsibility to help protect their own rights, I want to do what I can help you do to protect your water rights, because I'll tell you what, I can't stand my water quality as it is now. It comes out of the faucet smelling like rotten eggs. That's a rough thing to live with, but when your aquifers are affected, it affects everybody, it affects us, it affects you, my water quality notwithstanding, but I can't stand up here and talk all that intelligently about the water districts because I'm not clear on the impact. But I just want to tell you, water is important to me. It is a God-given thing, it is our lifeblood, and without it, we're nothing. Thank you.
Well, as most of you know, I was slightly involved in the water thing last year along with a lot of folks sitting in this room, when we filled this room up. We need to kind of separate that event maybe from the overall water issue, because I think we need to all remember why we were here last year was, number one, we knew something was happening, but we weren't sure exactly what it was. There's nothing more important in this county, and in any county for that matter, than our water resources, especially when we're on an aquifer in a water system like we are here, that really doesn't have any surface water. When the snow starts melting in Vale and Breckenridge, it doesn't help us. We have a limited water source underneath us. But I do think, and when we came together last year, it was because the issues were different. We had somebody that, when we came to understand what that issue was, that they were going outside the norm. They were going outside what we traditionally knew as property rights and water use issues in these metropolitan water districts, where the water use is defined or limited to the area that has been approved by the county commissioners, and those water districts are going to continue to exist. But the issue last year was twofold. Number one, they wanted to take, they get a statewide authority to take the water out of the county, and I know, and we knew immediately that was a problem, and we didn't want that, and we stopped that. And then the commissioners, you know, and to give them the credit where credit's due, the one-year moratorium was a good idea, and I supported that. The issue about bringing water in from the Arkansas and pumping it into our aquifer, whether or not that was a red herring or not, which it probably was, you know, was still an issue that we stood up and said no to. The issue of water is so important to so many other issues, including the exploration of oil and gas and other things. We need to educate people. I've been doing some research lately, I'm certainly not a water expert, but I do now know that per one acre feet of water is 325,950 gallons of water. That's a lot of water. If you take 5 million gallons of water, it's 15 acres, based upon the amount of water we're allowed to take out of one acre foot per year. So, we got, you know, if we have a 300-year water plan, we have a lot of water. Does it mean that we shouldn't protect it? Protect it's clean on this, through the, you know, we talk about fracking, we talk about oil exploration and the use of water. We have to protect our water and decide how to bring these other issues of prosperity and growth to Elbert County with a reasonable approach that protects all of that and respects property rights at the same time. So water is clearly one of the most emotional, one of the most important issues in our county today. But again, we need to do that, we should have always done it, and we need to always do it, on the table, up front, with everybody in this county involved, and with every expert we can get brought to the table to help and assist us in making the right decisions, educated decisions and well-informed decisions. County commissioners are not going to be water experts, they're not going to be oil and gas experts, they're not going to be financial experts. But what they can be is people that bring together the resources, the human resources, to make the best decisions for all of us, and that's how we're going to solve these kind of problems. Thank you.
Protecting water rights is one of the most important pieces of that the county commissioners, and I believe, we need to do. Individual water rights are like your property rights. They are your rights, and to protect them is, I believe, is something the county should look forward to do. I helped a lot of people this past year adjudicate their wells in an effort to protect their water rights, and that's what I would do as a county commissioner. I would protect the water rights of Elbert County.
Well, I think it's clearly been defined that water is an important issue. I agree with that. You know, we learned a lot from the, you know, the meeting was talked about August the 24th, I remember it well, I was here. What did we learn? What did we take from that? We learned a couple of things. Number one is, we did not have enough good people, experienced people, educated people around us to give us good information. That was quite obvious. So we took corrective action with that. We developed a water task force that Dr. Jerry Cook is in ahead of, and he has put together a team. Anything that comes to this county in the face of water now will have to go through that water task force. Then we will receive the good advice from professionals that we know and trust in this county. You know, and number two, the oil and gas, they're somewhat related, but we've done the same thing with oil and gas. It's here, it's coming. But we have now selected a review committee for oil and gas that go through the same process as any water issues go through. I think that, and I commend the good people of Elbert County. There are some people in this audience that take single favor that they did this. I'm here to tell you, it was a group of citizens in this county. There was one lady who went from door to door, single parent, door to door after dark, knocking on doors, saying, "Hey, we got to do something about our water." I commend that lady for doing that. I did not get her name, however, that's the type of people that you're all about. And do we need to listen to the citizens of Elbert County? You bet we do. Did we make some mistakes going through the whole process? Yeah, we made some mistakes, but we learned from them, we listened to the people. You know, within 24 hours, when people told us, "You're not communicating, you're not getting the word out," we put together a communication device where people could now take a look and listen to the Board of County Commissioners' meetings. Now we've started filming study sessions. You know, transparency is a word that's about wore out, I think, in this campaign. However, it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to be honest and upfront with you folks, and that's what we've attempted to do. Oil and gas and water, you bet they're a treasure. Thank you.
Mrs. Littlefield, what can you do as a commissioner to balance the needs of the citizens in the densely populated portions of Elbert County with the needs of the eastern portion of Elbert County that have spoken with many acres as they make their living
No hard questions tonight. Not going to answer any hard ones tonight, Scott. You know, this county is a whole county split in half. I recognize that. Most of my friends, everything I do, I go west, young lady, go west. And I go through the parts of the county that are highly populated, and I look at their road problems, and I look at our road problems, and I look at their population areas, and I look at our population areas, and I realize that out where I live, we're a bunch of cattle ranchers, and the people in town think that we don't really get what their problems are. And there's people in the town who think that we've got it made in the shade because we all live on big acreages. You know, I get that. But I also lived in town for a time. I was born and raised in Littleton, Colorado, and I watched that go from a dairy town to a metropolis in my lifetime. And those are really hard things to balance, they're very hard things to address. The cattle ranchers have rights, everybody has private property rights, everybody has personal property rights, and I think a lot of the answers lie in respecting people's individual rights to do what they want to with their life and with their real estate. People in town have specific things that they want to do. They have to get along in their neighborhoods. You know, people are closely packed, they have concerns about getting their kids to school on their roads, you know, we have concerns about trying to get out to our livestock and being able to feed. They're different problems, but they're the same problems, and those problems are is that we're all just trying to figure out how to make our life work. I recognize that the ranchers have different problems, I recognize that the town people have different problems, and I don't know what those answers are, but I'm not going to tell you that I don't understand that there is a dynamic difference in a way of life and what the goals are going to be. The only solution that I could even dream up at this juncture tonight is that we have to get involvement, and we have to weigh the opinions of the people, and we have to give them a voice in how things are handled. Because how they affect me out east and how they affect people who live almost in Parker are going to be two really different things, and if I'm not willing to listen to the opinions of everybody, I can't make it right for anyone. Thank you.
You know, there's three districts, commissioner districts in Elbert County. There's one that I'm running in, and there's two that's kind of up north, and then there's three, which is out here. And they are completely different in their lifestyles. But you know, first of all, property protection and our right to our own property values, our property rights, is guaranteed here, and it doesn't say whether it's one acre or 160 or 300 or 640. It applies to everybody. We all have those property rights, and elected officials need to protect that above all. But it is important in a county like Elbert, that is diverse, as diverse as sometimes Parker or Aurora is, you know, to our rural area, sometimes that western part, like where I live, it is. It's a different lifestyle. People commute, like I did for 29 years, when I drove down to the Denver Post, Rocky Mountain News, for all those years in work, I commuted, and it's a different lifestyle. But we need to understand as three county commissioners, this is an at-large county, and the three county commissioners together are making decisions collectively that affect everybody. So it's important, and it's incumbent upon people running for office who are dedicated to this kind of public service, to do the work, to understand, and not just stay in your own district, but to get out and talk to the people in Aggett and Deer Trail and Simla, as well as talk to the people that live a mile from the county line over here, and understand the diversity of issues, the diversity of concerns. Many of those issues and concerns are common issues. Somebody on five acres is as worried about their water, their domestic well, as somebody who's ag well is feeding their livestock out here. Those are important issues, the issue's water. How do you arrive at that? Somebody who's worried about oil and gas on five acres, and may be concerned about forced pooling being an issue, is, has an issue that maybe somebody on 640 who wants to develop and profit from all the years of work and gaining wealth and land and profiting from it, as they well should, should have a right to do. But commissioners, all three of us, have to be up on all of those issues and understand that the bigger picture is important. And if you're not willing to sit down and do the homework, get involved, go out and talk to the people, and learn what those issues are through transparency, accountability, and asking questions, and meeting with the people, and you shouldn't be running for county commissioner to begin with. That's what it's going to take, somebody with that kind of drive and dedication to do that. Thank you.
Back in 2008, when I was running for county commissioner then, I went out and went door to door, talking with people throughout the county. The one thing I took away from that experience was the interaction with people, like we're doing right now, tonight, is the only way to work and understand what the needs of every area and every citizen is. Without that, you're not going to get the full picture. It's like you said, District 3 folks out there have larger property out there where the roads and other things are not as important as they are from the north end. So this would be my approach to this, to understanding the needs from District 3, 2, and 1, is to go out, hold town hall meetings, hold meetings at night, when you can come out like you have tonight, and we could talk about them, you can express your opinions on what's important to you, and then we take that and we come back and we start working on those ideas, and try to solve, and solve those ideas for each person in each area of the county. Thank you.
You know, I talk about, during the campaign trail, I talk about a balance. If I knew what the answer to the oil and gas was, I would give it to you tonight. But this county is divided. There are people on the east side that says, "No rules, no regulations, let it come." There's people on the west side that says, "All regulations, put it in there, we want total strict control." Somewhere in between this is a balance. We have to accommodate, one of the prime candidates said that we serve the whole people of the county, we do, absolutely. Somewhere there is a balance here. The one thing that you don't want to leave commissioners with is no regulatory control. The state has a whole different vision of what this gas and oil program is all about, and it's to serve their needs. They may not have our best interests in mind. Now, do we want to scare off oil and gas? No, we do not. Is it important to us? Is it important to us as a county and citizens? Absolutely. So, I say, the committees that we put in place, one of the best things that we can do is make sure that we have a balance of people on those committees that understand gas and oil, that understand water. You know, one of the previous candidates talked about getting all the opinions of people. I can tell you this, if you want a million opinions, run for public office, you'll get it. You'll get it. You know, some of them are good, some of them are great opinions, and I understand that. But I think we're past opinions. I think now we've reached a point where we need professional knowledge, professional skill and abilities in this county to make those tough decisions. Do I think one commissioner can make that decision on their own? I do not think so. We need to have the input of people that really know what's going on in the industry. Thank you.
Elbert County's almost two counties. The district I represent runs north and south from just a little bit east of Elizabeth all the way to Lyman down through the El. I only know of one family that's come forward out there and made it public that they do not want any at oil and gas development or water development on their particular ranch. Talking with people in the northeast corner, they're very concerned about oil and gas development in that area, because they don't want their lifestyle ruined. Yes, it's going to be a difficult challenge to try to come up with a balance, but I do believe we need some reasonable rules and regulations, primarily to take care of the subdivision roads in western Elbert County if oil and gas development is going to take place in that area. Out east, as I said, only one family has come forward and expressed the opinion to me that they do not want oil and gas development in that area. Is it a challenge to try and bring east and west together? You bet it is, because they are not going to agree. We have citizens that live in the western part of the county, they shop in Parker, they shop in Southland, they shop in Castle Rock, they shop in southeast Denver. They spend very little of their income in Elbert County. The people that live around Elizabeth and Kiowa do. Yes, we are a very, very diverse county. We have basically two to three different cultures in the county, and I think we all are aware of it. Thank you.
Mr. Rowland, give us your principles, values, and thoughts on oil and gas, and what would you, what you would do as a county commissioner regarding this issue?
Well, my principles and values are that we, again, and I know it's a word that maybe has been used a lot, but the word transparency can't be used enough, and I think is something that we have to make sure that we don't lose sight of in anything we approach. I have said repeatedly, and I'll say again, I am for all- I have said repeatedly, and I'll say again, I am for oil, and I am for gas, and I am for water. And I think that like a lot of the folks here today, and we're saying a lot of the same thing, some of us, that there is a, there is a common theme here that we need to find that balance. Oil and gas is coming to Elbert County. Oil and gas brings prosperity and opportunity and jobs, and it brings a responsibility that every one of us as Americans, and I'm not preaching here, have in the exploration and development of domestic oil and energy resources that our country so desperately needs right now. It brings the things that, that, that we haven't seen in some years, it could be a lot of the, uh, answers to some of the economic problems we have, but it has to be done in a way that is not, you know, we don't want another Williston, North Dakota. Actually, my wife and I own land in Willi-, just, uh, south of Williston, North Dakota, and, and over near the Montana border, my wife's family ranch. And do we want to explore oil? Absolutely. And do we want it to be, uh, you know, profitable? Absolutely. Just like many of the people in this county do. But do we want to have, uh, roads that our kids can't get to school and the school bus is on? No. Are there solutions to that? Of course there are. We talk about oil and gas regulations, and I think we have to be honest and upfront with everybody. The, uh, sec-, the Attorney General Suthers, who was just in this room, I think a couple Saturdays ago, Attorney General John Suthers, sent a letter to Elbert County recently like he sent to El Paso, stating, once again, reminding us that there is not a lot that we can do to supersede state and oil gas regulations. There are some things that we can do, and it's true, we need to negotiate the best deals and make sure that the deals that are made with the landlords and with the local municipalities and our county commissioners are beneficial to Elbert County and protect us. But are they going to allow us to go in and change the setbacks or change the open pit rules? They've said they will not do that. So, the reality is, it's a tough road to hold. We have to have people who are committed and who understand and know that it's coming, but it's got to be managed in such a way that it gives us the best deal that we can get. But is oil and gas coming to Elbert County? It is coming. You know, there's sixty-four operating wells in Elbert County today, oil and gas wells, already operating here. And so, you know, uh, I guess, you know, the, the final thing I'd say, my principles and values are applying honest, open answers, not telling you that, that we can go out and change regulations that we can't change when it's, when the, when the state and the Colorado oil and gas people mandate that we, that we can't do it anyway. Those are, those are wasted words and wasted time. We have to do it. The oil companies don't want to come here, and they don't want to come here and make enemies out of Elbert. They come here with a mutually beneficial approach. They want to make a profit, we want to make a profit, we want our roads kept clean, we don't want our, our schools, uh, you know, blocked off when the, with the truck traffic, and we want user fees to keep the roads up to speed. Those are all the kinds of decisions that have to be done thoughtfully, that have to be done in front of you, on the table, every day with no secret.
I believe education of the oil, um, rights, uh, in, in our county, uh, or in the state itself is, is most important. Understanding what oil companies can and cannot do, um, when they're looking for oil within your property is very important, and that's why we, um, we went around and talked to a bunch of different, of the HOAs throughout the county, educating them on force pooling, other matters within, within the oil industry. Um, as far as the county's role is, 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 uh, with regulations, I honestly do believe there, there's a place for it. We need to, to, to look out for our county regardless of what we're being told from the state, that I think there is a place for some. If we had nothing in place, then, uh, then I would believe that the oil, uh, that the oil situation with the exploration in this county would, uh, would not be, uh, would not be beneficial towards us. Oil and gas is inevitable, it's coming to the county, it's already here as a matter of fact, just like it's been said. And I agree, and I believe as long as we control it and, and maintain it like we've done with building and other pieces of the county, I believe that we can, it, it will be beneficial to the county and, uh, we can benefit all the way from that.
I have a little bit different posture on it. I don't think it's a let's make a deal, let's get the best deal we can. I think it's very adamant that Elbert County has some rules and regulations in place. Even though the state keeps going back and forth of what's going on, I still, and I said this before, I'm not sure the state has the best influence of Elbert County. And I am here to protect that. There are three things that we can control, it's our roads, our air and our water. Those are the three assets in this county that is precious. And I think that we need to have a moderate set of rules and regulations that fit the entire county and be firm on it and move forward in, in that manner. Thank you.
I used the expression four years ago when I ran for office that I wanted to keep Elbert County a Colorado treasure, and I still believe that today and I will stick with that. We have a great future here in Elbert County and oil and gas is going to be part of the future whether we like it or not because it's there. Once again, I'll reiterate, I think we need reasonable rules and regulations in place to control access to and from those wells. Uh, I will stick by that. Our planning commission right now is reviewing those oil and gas regulations, they will come before us at some future date. Senator Ted Harvey's bill was killed last week in a Senate committee, uh, that would preempt, uh, counties from having any rules and regulations. I firmly believe that the legislature will go along and not put anything in place so that counties can have reasonable rules and regulations. Certain counties right now already have reasonable rules and regulations in place, and I, I am one commissioner that will vote for reasonable rules and regulations for oil and gas in Elbert County. Thank you.
Oil and gas is here, but above and beyond anything else, I support private property rights. And I guess I'm a constitutionalist when it comes to private property rights because I believe that when you buy a piece of property, you should be able to do with it what you see fit. However, I'm just one of thousands of people who bought a piece of property whose mineral rights were sold, I'm guessing somewhere around a hundred and fifty years ago. So the fact that some other company owns my mineral rights is something that I have had to learn to live with, but I signed on that contract and I did it willingly and I understood the implications. So oil and gas may very well affect me whether I choose it or not. They're coming and I won't be able to stop them because they have a legal right to something that was sold to them. How I want to protect myself is to have the ability to negotiate on my own behalf with the, with the oil and gas companies. I am not convinced it's a county commissioner's job, I'm not convinced that it isn't, but I want to be honest when I stand here and say that it is your private property right to do with it what you see fit. If you want oil and gas because you own two or three thousand acres out in eastern Elbert County, I believe you should have that right. If you live in the middle of Elizabeth and oil and gas scares you half to death and it should, I would like you to have an opinion about how that gets managed. I would like to have a chance to investigate it more, more thoroughly. Um, again, I apologize for not being able to be more complete. Thank you.
The final question before we let each candidate do a wrap-up, the obligatory Republican question. How long have you been registered as a Republican and why are you a Republican?
I've been a Republican, I believe, since I was about twenty-four years old, and I'm fifty-six now. So I've been around it a lot. I lived in a household, uh, that was a Democrat household. My mother still to this day is a Democrat. So we have very interesting conversations in our house when we're, we're around each other. But it's the values of this party that, that have, and, and, uh, the people, the leaders that I've seen in this party that have inspired me to, to be a Republican. It is, uh, people like our president, late President Ronald Reagan that, 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 showed the great leadership it took to bring our country back from, um, a very devastating presidency and put us on a track to be prosperous for many, many, many years. Um, and now, that's where we need to turn now, you know, with our upcoming election is to get a Republican back in the, uh, oral office and get us back on the road to prosperity.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am a lifelong Republican. I was raised that way on the ranch. I have been a registered Republican since the mid-eighties. And I have always understood the core values of being a Republican, and I do honor those. I believe in property rights, I certainly believe in the right to bear arms, uh, I believe in the right to life. That's why I'm a Republican. The D-word was never mentioned, I guarantee, in my family, uh, or else I wouldn't be here today, I can tell you that. So, truly, I believe in the Republican way of life, I believe in this Republican Party, uh, and it's not only local, but national. I believe that we can make a difference and we need to continue. Thank you.
When I turned eighteen years of age, I registered as a Republican and I was darned proud of it, and I've been a Republican ever since. I've been a member of both the Denver and the Arapahoe County Young Republicans because neither Douglas or Elbert County had a young Republican organization at the time. I have supported Republican candidates many years ago, I worked on Dick Clock's campaign for governor, I've worked on Bill Armstrong's campaign for governor, and I have supported Republican candidates all my life, and I am very proud of it. And I will continue being a Republican, and I do believe in individual property rights and the right to bear arms. Thank you.
I am a lifelong Republican. When I turned eighteen and registered to vote, I registered as a Republican. I was raised with Republican values. I was raised that you had to work for what you got, and if that isn't as Republican as anything gets, I don't know what else is.
I too was raised in a house with Democrats, my mother and father. My dad still thinks that FDR was president, eighty-eight years old, God love him, and we have some spirited debates. He's also World War II combat veteran, so I think I give him some slack from time to time. I, at eighteen, joined the Young Republicans Club in Michigan, in spite of my parents' affiliation. I actually went to my first caucus during the Rick, Nick, Richard Nixon era, while I was still in high school, before I went into the military, um, when Jerry Ford was our congressman and George Romney was our governor. I spent most of my life, uh, raising a family and being a registered Republican. And then when President, or when Joe, when Dole, Bob Dole, was put up as president, a candidate, I got really upset, and I reacted by registering as an independent. And then I started the Elbert Tea Party, and my friend Tom Peterson quickly came and straightened me out. And I think we, can convince me that that wasn't the right to go, it wasn't anger that was going to get us what we needed to do, and, and the ship and the platform that we all need to operate in is the Republican Party. I came back, I was out about a year and a half, and I've been a Republican ever since. I am a member of the two thousand and twelve Leadership Program at the Rockies class where principled conservatives and values are a prerequisite to being in that class. And, uh, and I, I put principle over party, but party is important and it is where we need to be, it is where we have to be, where we have to come together with other principled conservatives to bring our nation, our state and our community back to where it needs to be. And two thousand and twelve is the year to get it done, and it may be the last time to get it done. We got to get it together now, and, uh, and so that's my answer to being a Republican. I've been one my whole life, except for the year and a half that I, uh, I, I was angry and, like a lot of people, and, uh, stepped out for a bit, but I came back.
Mr. Schwab, I believe it's your turn, would you please recap for us? And, uh, yeah, everybody's done, uh, a couple announcements, we're looking at.
Well, thank you. I, uh, the next time that I see this body, you'll be voting on us. And I really want to encourage for you to look at the backgrounds, look at the experience that we've talked about here tonight. It is my firm belief, this is not the time in this county for a new county commissioner. You need to somebody that has experienced it, has gone through it, and very similar, a colleague of mine, and I never really understood this until he said that, the first year of being a county commissioner is like drinking from a fire hose. So, those of you who have had that experience, you know exactly what I'm talking about. This isn't the time for somebody new on the block. This is the time to put some veterans up to bat, we have got to get through our water, our gas and oil issues. This isn't an experiment time, this is serious. Do we take this serious? You bet we do. And it is time to move forward for the next four years. Delegates, I thank you for listening to me tonight, I look forward to your vote and your support as the next county commissioner. Thank you.
Once again, I'm running for county commissioner because a number of people have encouraged me to do so. I feel that we've done a great job in the past three years plus, we've balanced the budget, we've come forth with transparency, every county commissioner's meeting has been open to the public, we've taken public comment at every one of those meetings. We are now, uh, live streaming our county commissioners' meetings via the internet. I think, I am running on my record, I think we have done a good job, we have provided the services that the people have asked for, those services have been, we've been complimented numerous times on those services. I would appreciate your vote, I would appreciate your support, and thank you all very much for coming tonight.
Somebody wise once said, "The only thing to fear is fear itself." Putting new people into government is always a challenge. I suppose when we use our example as the federal government, we have a lot to be afraid So, from that standpoint, I'm not up, I, I don't want to think about reelection, but I would be new, and I'm just putting myself up for your consideration, you'd be taking a chance on me, and I'd like a chance to earn that trust or any trust that I could be given. I'm a fresh face, I have fresh ideas, that's what I have to offer. I promise you that I will research the issues more thoroughly. I do care about the same things you care about. My property's everything to me, my family is everything to me, and my ability to make a living and stay in business is everything to me. It's all I have, so thank you very much.
You know, experience comes from a lot of different places and a lot of different perspectives, and I know that as, our country was founded on citizen legislators who came and served and then went home and back to the farms and back to the fields and back to the things that they did. I've been the Elbert County chairman of the Tea Party for the last three years, and I've been very involved in local politics at a different level and from a different perspective, from a liberty perspective, if you will. But being involved in the water, in the budget issues and transparency issues, the compactor issue, and all the other things that are facing our counties, doesn't necessarily come from just being in office. It comes from a perspective of being an active, involved citizen in this community. I've done that for the last three years. I retired on November first unexpectedly because the economy and the newspaper industry is like a lot of industries, and I had an opportunity to take a buyout, and I ran for the door. I was glad of it. But, um, I, I, I believe that it is time to face the real issues of Elbert County with fresh ideas, but with experience, knowledge and proven track records that come with that. We're not asking you to go out and take, and hire somebody that's going to need four years to be trained. I have that experience, life experiences, living in business, living in the world of business, like many of us have, operating our own businesses, as some have said they did tonight. Myself, twenty-nine years, human resource, operations management, transportation, I'm an environmental safety risk manager, I've managed OSHA and EPA for twenty years for the Rocky Mountain News, including asbestos basements, abates, abatements and things like the issues at our compactor. Those issues don't, those experiences don't just come with being elected officials. I think the last three years have been difficult for Elbert County, and I think it is time for us to take a business-like pragmatic approach with open transparency and accountability, and I can bring that to Elbert County. I live here, I love this place, we're going to stay here, and that is what it's going to take to bring this county, I think, back to the rural lifestyle that we all moved here for in the first place, whether it's on four, six hundred and forty acres or five acres. That's the approach it's going to take, a new approach. Our financial issues are serious, they have to be dealt with now, we don't have four more years to experiment on whether we can bring this county back into fiscal responsibility. I will do that, and I ask for your vote when you come here on the twenty-fourth of March. Thank you.
After speaking with a lot of people that I, that I have, um, throughout the last six years, I've, I've, I believe that Elbert County is at a point where it needs to have new leadership and a new direction, it needs to have different ideas and different approaches to the, the issues that face Elbert County. And I believe I bring those, those types, that type of leadership with my professional background and experience that I've had. And this is what I think that, uh, that we need to do here in Elbert County. Thank you very much for coming out tonight and supporting, supporting our, our, our election process. Again, my name's Steve Aldes and I've been looking forward to... Again, my name's Steve Aldes and I've been looking forward to gaining your support. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming this evening on a cold night. We really appreciate it. Let's give them a round one more time.